Said statutes or take any other action relative thereto. The article was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. This is the Board of Selectmen recommended favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Article One say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the amount of $227,697 and appropriate said sum for Chapter 90 approved roadwork, said amount to be used pending reimbursement by the state with such work to be done under the supervision of the highway superintendent or take any other action relative thereto. The article was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Article Two say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimous.
We took care of that in the specials. He doesn't know sums in it. It doesn't do anything.
So it has to be tabled up?
Yeah.
But you'll have to make that motion.
Okay, under Article Three, we have a motion.
I make a motion to table Article Three. We handled the transfers in the special town meeting that just preceded this, and this doesn't have any amounts of money in it.
So a motion to table, do we have a second?
Second.
There's no discussion on motion table. All in favor of table Article Three say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, table.
I'll remove Article Five.
Okay, I understand that we have a procedural, we want to move Article Five to four, is that correct? I mean before Article Four. So, Bill, we need a motion to advance Article Five? Is that what?
Yes.
Okay. So.
I'll make a motion to advance Article Five to occur before Article Four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to advance Article Five and a second. There can be discussion. Do we want to have discussion on this or do we want to take a vote? All right, all in favor of advancing Article Five to be heard before Article Four, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All right, it is majority in favor. So, I will read Article Five. To see if the town will vote to accept the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 23A, authorizing the Board of Selectmen to hire a town administrator and to assign to the town administrator such duties as they shall determine or take any other action relative thereto. The article was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The Government Study Committee recommended favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable. Second.
We have a motion and a second. So, do we have, is there a presentation on this or are we just opening the discussion? And who's?
I thought Joe was going first. Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe DeMore, Nine Cherry Tree Lane, I was the chairman of the Groveland Study Committee. And we received a very special charge from the Board of Selectmen, and this evening they've asked me to present on their behalf as well, in addition to the Study Committee. And I'll make this brief, and then I'll be off to the side there. If anybody has questions, I might be able to answer them for you. So, consider the evolution of our town, very briefly, a little bit of a backdrop is sometimes helpful. Our town was incorporated in 1850, and it pretty much ran the way it did, mostly through volunteers, all the way until 1954. And then something pretty amazing happened in 1954. At that time, they created a three-member Board of Selectmen. And what's even more astonishing, those people were really, really visionary. They knew, just like we know today, that the town was growing and things were getting a little bit more complicated. And the idea started floating that maybe we can't solve everything through volunteers. So remarkably, that model continued to work. And then the next major evolution point was 1996, when a group of citizens, under the guidance of the Board of Selectmen, convened for the purpose of creating a special act and for the purpose of hiring a finance director. And that's probably the first time that the idea that we need to have professional credentialed managers run our town took hold. And again, law, many, many decades go by here. And let me explain for those that don't understand, special act is when we go to the state and say, we want to do something, and we need you to create a law, we would ask you to create a law. And that law has to be passed both at the House and the Senate. We have to have a local representative, the legislative team, like Representative Amira and Senator Bruce Tar will help us put together a law, and it has to actually be signed by the governor. So we've done that twice in the history of Groveland. Maybe they did that in 54, I have to check. But we did that in 98, and then we did it in 2014, when we converted from a three-member board to a five-member board. So here we are. Things have gotten really complicated. Compliance, tax issues, management of people, handling, not clients, but the public. So, our committee came up with the solution, because that was our grant, how do we implement the town administrator? Our committee did not receive a charge as to whether or not we should do it. That was a foregone conclusion. How to do it? We looked at a couple of different pathways, and the pathways are two steps. Tonight is the first step, composed of two pieces. Sorry, it's a little complicated. The first step is the warrant that's in front of you. Can we hire a town administrator right now with existing state law? And we can, if you pass the article that's before you. But we also have to get rid of, if you will, the finance director position, and that's the article also before you. So that's why I wanted to reverse them, but they're mutually exclusive. You can pass both, you can say no to both, you can say yes to both, and you can say no to one and yes to another. It still works. If we say no to both, I just walk out here and nothing's changed for any of us. Our existing arrangement is fine. So the town administrator, I think, will be developed with some questions and some input from people that have supported it. So I won't belabor that point, but it's an important thing to do. It's not an urgent matter, but it's important. And it's right now, this time in the history of Groveland, that we now evolve our government to this very important step. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Joe. So I imagine there's going to be some questions. Are there questions? Do you want Kathy?
Can I say?
Oh, sure, yeah, go ahead.
If that's okay. Hi, I'm Kathy Castren Ellis. I'm on the Board of Selectmen. I've been involved in the town government for over 30 years. And for the past three to five years, I've kind of had a front row seat to the current dilemma that we have in our town management. We did have a financial director, that director left a position to take a position as a town administrator. We are like one of seven towns of our size in the whole Commonwealth that have not transitioned to a town administrator. Town administrator handles both finance and administrates, which is nice. So I came up with my top five reasons to say yes. The some will say, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Well, we do need a little fix here, okay? We need to have a well-run town. Our town is growing. It's growing in complexity, it's a digital world, things happen very quickly, okay? And our town employees expect to have someone there who can make decisions. Secondly, will this position cost us money? No, we will not have an override to change out a job in the town. We will restructure and carefully reallocate funds within the budget that we vote tonight. Why now? Why not wait? Why not wait a year or two? Well, the position right now is currently unfilled for the financial director. So it is an opportune time to make this change and go out there and hire a town administrator. My concern would be that if we try to hire a financial director after we've had a committee study this, and the Board of Selectmen has debated this for the past two years, most candidates will look at us as, they don't really want a financial director, so why should I go there? And I think we'd see a very limited pool of candidates. Time is money. Town operations, as I said, have become more complex and require day-to-day administration. We're losing out on opportunities to do things, to pursue grants, to make decisions, because we're a volunteer board and we meet twice a month. The town administrator will achieve both direct and indirect financial savings. Just a few years ago, we hired a town planner for the first time, and this individual, this young woman, has saved us over $200,000 in grants. Fantastic. Consequences of not changing right now. The finance director that we eventually do hire, if we do not change to a town administrator, we stay with finance director. Whoever we do hire will still be regarded as, by some employees, as a manager, but will not have the authority to do this function. Critical decisions may have to be postponed till our meetings. There will be turnover in key positions. Talented young employees that we now have will eventually move off into towns that they perceive to have better management, more professional management. We have some really talented employees right now, and I'd like to keep them. And again, I'll say again, I'm worried that if we were to post a financial director position now, after having studied and found the benefits of moving to town administrator, it would be kind of looked as a lame duck posting for a finance director. And I wanted to say one more last thing, and then I'll stop talking. The committee that did the study, that brought this to you, they wrote an amazing report that's on our town website. But this committee is comprised of some of the most talented and most generous of their time volunteers in our town. Joe DeMore, Betty Garsky, John Christopher, John Osborne, and I know I'm missing a name. Maybe Joe could shout it out for me, please?
A family man with young kids that made a sacrifice for us, Andrew Cox.
Andrew Cox, yes.
And Mike Dempsey.
Thank you. These people just did a fantastic job. So no matter what you vote, I think they deserve a round of applause, please. Thank you.
All right, questions? To the mic, please.
Dick Hodges, 35 Union Street. I'm going to be voting no on Article Four and Five, because they're both linked. And it has a lot to do with math. We have about 100 people here tonight, well, a little bit over. We have 6,000 residents. Let me tell you, when you divide 6,000 into 100, it comes out to be 0.016666667. That's the percentage of people making a decision on how our town should be run. I would rather table this and put this on a ballot and see how many of the 6,000, and I know 6,000 are not coming, I've been here long enough to know that, we're lucky to get the 100 tonight, but that's my main reason for voting no. We have too few people here to make that kind of dramatic decision. I listened to the earlier May town meeting, and they talked about surveys. I just want to let you know, I was not surveyed. And if it's anything like what the Democrats and the Republicans do, if there's a survey and 65 or 85% of the people they survey were Republicans or Democrats, I'll tell you exactly how the survey will go. I thank Jason for the postcard. This is the first, I've been here in Groveland for decades, this is the first time I've had a selectman encourage me how to vote. I try, I take a lot of pride in trying to do my homework, I don't need any help from the selectman in that regard. Joe, you've always spoken quite eloquently, particularly when you went from three to five. I still wanted the three. And now we're going for one. I've never lost my own argument. I like the idea that there's multiple people sitting here at this table with multiple ideas, and not one person who's pulling the reins. I like debate. I like people coming up with different ideas, and it doesn't matter to me who has the best idea at all. I've never lost an argument when I was arguing with myself. So I would table this until there, we have a town vote, or at least a ballot, so that we get hundreds of people's feedback. And I have no problem. If the town decides at that point, that's exactly the way I would go. I have no reservation on that. But based on what we have here tonight, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Oh, it's on, okay. Sorry about that. So, I appreciate and respect you, Mr. Hodges, and I certainly appreciate your sentiments. But I want everybody to understand a few things, please. First of all, the state legislature, over many decades, created specific pathways for everybody in this room and all 5,400 and something registered voters in Groveland to decide important matters. And that is the town meeting. The town meeting is a legislative body, just like the Senate is a legislative body, just like the House of Representatives is a legislative body. The only difference is we only exist for one night, magically for a few hours, and we have no parking spaces out there, no pensions and no health plans. But in 1850, they made a decision, the town meeting was the way we were going to govern ourselves, and so this is it. And in democracy, whoever shows up makes the decision. We have 5,400 and something voters, we only had 309 or so people that went to the polls. Volunteerism is on the decline all over the country. People are just, we're operating on a wave of apathy. And so, that's the first part. The second part is, there is nothing in the law in Massachusetts that says that a non-binding referendum should replace a town meeting. You can't do that. And then what do you do if you say yes at town meeting and no at the ballot? That's going to make a lot of people happy. The non-binding referendum is non-binding, it does absolutely nothing, and it cannot replace town meeting. So it is regrettable that we don't have a lot of people show up. You want to take a look at the ballot? Did you see how many spaces were empty this year? That wasn't COVID, that was apathy. And thankfully, we have amazing people that will come out and serve. We're very thankful. So there is no basis whatsoever for a non-binding referendum. It ends up becoming nothing more than a very complicated and very expensive survey. And we had one of those in 2018, and 62% of the people said, yes, we want a town administrator.
So if I can just, I just want to make sure things are clear, ask our town council. So if there were at the ballot, it would be a non-binding referendum, and it would still need to come back to town meeting to be enacted, is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, that's correct. The statute says that it may be by a vote of the town or by a bylaw. The town vote typically means a vote of town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Greg LeBrecq, 11 Baldwin Terrace. First of all, thank you, Joe, for all the work you did on this. I know we've had conversations about it. I'm not exactly, how can I put this? I don't really care what you call the position, but certain things in the job description bother me about it that I read on the thing. First and foremost, it's not?
Greg, take off your mask.
Take off my mask? How do I call it down? Very good. Select person Catherine Ellis said it, yes, it's not going to cost us any more money, but it changes the setup. We lose bodies. I will tell you, there's a lot of work that gets done in the treasurer, collector, accountant's office with the finance director. And by not making this position also the treasurer, collector, you don't, you lose two, you only get one position in the thing to collect the taxes, to record the taxes, and it backs up. And if anybody watched the selectman meeting the other night, you can see what happens when the auditors are there, and it backs up. Reconciliations were getting missed, things are getting delayed, things are getting pushed back. I get it. They're better people, maybe they're more expensive people, but they can only do so much in a day. You need those hands doing these things. Second of all, you've met through the ballot, and I agree, I'm sure apathy had a lot to do with it. But if you look at the job description, why would you want to run for any of these things? You have no power. You can't even hire your own employees or discipline them or create the pathway you want to use for your department. It's been taken away from you by a town administrator through the Board of Selectmen. So why would you run? You're only going to take the slings and arrows, you're never going to get any of the credit. It doesn't work. And last, something that I always like to see, and it happens in a lot of towns, you mentioned most of them have this, a lot of them also have a residency requirement. This is an important position. I have a, I think things run better when people get to see what the results of their work is. I know when I sat in that office, when I was driving around town, I'd notice when streetlights were out, I'd notice when things need to be painted. I didn't take the same way into town and the same way out of town on a daily basis and not have to see it all. So I would like to see in the job description, a residency requirement. It's quite common. Tom Moses, the person who became town administrator in a small town, he had to move there. This is common. So like I said, I don't care what you call it, a finance director or a town administrator, but I think the job description, when it goes out, it needs to be posted, it needs to have some of these things in there, or else if you get the wrong person, you have a disaster on your hands.
All right, go ahead, yeah, just step right up.
JR McComiskey, 27 Broad Street. Just a couple of questions on, when you did the commission, what form of government were those other small towns? Were they five-board selectmen, three-board selectmen, ones? How were they kind of laid out?
Who can answer that for us?
I can't actually, I have a listing I'd be glad to share to you, but most of the towns that have the five-board selectmen have a town administrator. We're like one of, we're like one of seven that do not.
But of the six small ones that you mentioned, right? Because that's the way you said.
We're like a blank, we have like a blank. So, and in answer to the question, we're not reducing financial positions. We are going to still have a treasurer, which we don't have separate now, and an assistant treasurer. We've allocated the budget carefully.
That wasn't my question.
No, I know. But I guess, I see a perception that there's something not right or not good here. This is a very proactive thing.
I'm for it, so.
Me too, yeah.
But I just, what I want to know is, I have five, I have five boards, Board of Selectmen over here trying to do something, I have one town manager, that's a lot of, like chiefs in the, you know, cooking the stew right now, or chefs cooking the stew. Are we going to, are we going to disrupt the selectman, or do I need five of you to do that, or can I do it with three, with the town administrator? What are the roles, the role differences? Just let me finish, and you can jump right in. What are the role differences between a select, the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator? I'm for paying people to do the right job, because that's the best thing to do, put professionals in there, I get it. Also, we also looked at joining forces with the other town as part of this commission. I mean, we are Penn Tucket system here. It seems like we have a lot of overhead for such a small 6,000, you know, person town. It would make more sense to combine a lot of those resources as part of that commission, because I didn't know what was going on. Did we look at any of that as well, or was it so pinpointed to find that we didn't actually look out to other things?
I can, I can answer that.
Okay, go, Joe.
So, thank you for your questions. First of all, Mr. LeBrecq, thank you very much, and to agree that we do need leadership, whatever we call it. And certainly, your input on the job description would be valued. So thank you for supporting the measure. Your questions, let me, let me take one at a time. If you take a look at Article, I'm sorry, warrant number five, it asks that we implement a town administrator using existing law, Chapter 4123A. If we are successful in doing this, do you remember I said to you that we have a two-step process? The first step is to do both of these things tonight, get rid of the finance director, and yes, allow these folks to hire a town administrator under existing law. Next year, if it is the pleasure of the Board and they reissue the charge to my committee, and we all agree to serve, I know I will, and I'll recruit the others, hopefully. The work is actually already done. We're going to come back and say, now we're asking for a special act to implement a town administrator, and that will allow us to customize it the way we want it, so that there will be a very clearer division between select a board and the town manager, a town administrator. The law that's before you in Article Five is what I would consider calling a weak town administrator. All of the appointment authority is still fully vested in the Board of Selectmen. But we're going to tweak it a little bit differently next year, at this time, God willing, because it's going to might take a year before we have a special act for the finance director rescind you. So, you'll have to follow the meeting so we can answer all your questions. But we've dialed a lot. Now, Mr. Hewig and his law firm, I have to say that the work that needs to be done for next year that we would present to you is already done. It's on file. They took our proposal and went with details that you're asking about, but it's not a matter for the floor tonight.
How do we see that?
Same.
How do we see that? You said you took it a step further, where do we see that document? Is that document on file somewhere? Where? Is it on the town chair site?
We have, actually, we have a proposal that's on the town website that would model.
You're saying the step two, I mean.
Yeah.
That's a step as a weak one, if we're going to look at really putting in a town manager and have professionals run the town, I think that's the right approach.
Yeah.
But are we also expanding the scope to look at joining?
Well, it might be the pleasure of the Board to say, you know, we hired a town administrator off of Article Five this year, and we kind of like it the way it is, we might just leave it that way. But if they want to tweak it a little bit further, we'll have to come before you.
Is it only the Board can tweak that? Because that comes, it seems like there's a self-interest there.
A hundred or more people, town meeting, this is the ultimate authority for that decision.
All right, so how do we do that?
Next year, we will come back with a special act to implement the town administrator, not under the sec, warrant number five, under.
Is that a condition?
Chapter 4123A, but a special act.
Is that a condition we can put on the article today?
No.
So basically, I could say yes today, and then a year from now, you forget.
It's not, I don't think we can put a condition on an existing warrant. I don't think it's necessary, but, but good questions.
Okay. Anyone else? Good? Yes.
You know, again, like I said earlier, there are some articles that take longer, some that take less. If a question is being asked, I want it to be answered. I'm not going to cut somebody off. If they, if they're, if they, if they're saying the same thing over and over again, yes, we'll stop, we'll stop at that point. But so far, unless I'm not hearing correctly, I haven't heard a lot of redundant talking. So if you've got something new to offer, go ahead.
All right, it's Ken Pelron, 20 Washington Street. Running a town is a lot like running a school. We have a school committee, and they direct the, what they tell the superintendent what we'd like. They hire the superintendent. They pick it. If they don't like him, they fire him. It's a big job, it's day-to-day. I worked in the school system, a million things happen every day. You have principals, you have department heads, you have all kinds of people. There are day-to-day decisions that have to be done. I've been watching these selectman meetings for the last few years, and I see the tremendous amount of effort that people have put in. But there's lots of times they're asking questions about something that, do we have permission for something to happen on a baseball field, so we can have kids warming up and stuff like that? That's kind of stuff we can't have in a town like this anymore. We need someone to take care of that easy stuff every day, and when a crisis comes up, we can't wait two weeks for the selectman meeting all the time. These people are volunteer, they don't get paid, it's a thankless job, they do a tremendous job. But we're beyond that now. The state is very complex, you can't do anything now like you did 10 years ago. If you want to build a building, you have all kinds of codes and stuff, you need people that know this stuff. Need people that have put their life experience in becoming a town administrator. The gentleman we hired recently, he was outstanding. He could answer all kinds of questions because he had the knowledge. He didn't take over running the town. A good administrator will deal with the people that they have, okay? And they'll answer the questions, say, we can do this, we can do that, that's something for the selectman to decide, all right? And as far as whether we need to have another meeting or something, or put a referendum, everybody had their chance to vote in the last election, no one did, okay? We had writers and that. So you make a decision. Today was the meeting, this ballot was on there, I watched the discussions, Joe and those people putting this on over and over again. It's clear, go on the website. I went on the website, it's right there, okay? So you have your opportunity, we have an opportunity now, it's a perfect time now. Denise is gone, she did a lot of things she shouldn't have had to do, but a lot of things that need to be done, and we need to have someone responsible and have it in that position, all right?
Thank you. All right, anything else? Are we ready to vote? Oops, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Again, I'm Ruth Riebarg, I'm chairing the Finance Board this year, and I just want to. The mic's not, is it not on?
Yeah, just have to get right up to it.
Thank you. I, I just want to, I'm not going to reiterate what's already been said, what the last person said, I think is exactly the statement that the Finance Board has been making. said, I think is exactly the statement that the finance board has been making. We did publish a letter supporting our, recommending our support of this article, both articles. There's a booklet that's been published tonight. It's also on the website, but I just want to make sure it's clear that the finance board has made a unanimous recommendation supporting these two articles. You talk about volunteers. We're all volunteers for the town. We've put in a tremendous amount of work. We are involved in all the budgeting. We're involved with the finance director. We would love to be involved with the town administrator. I watch all of the selectmen's meeting, or I'm there, and it is true that we are rehashing, we're asking a lot for our volunteers, and an administrator will help smooth the process, help move us forward. On behalf of the finance board, we have accountants, we have finance professionals, we have entrepreneurs, we have managers. We understand the professional workforce. We also understand the complexities of municipal finance, municipal budgeting. It's hard, it's complicated, there's legal aspects. It's more than an average volunteer may want to give, or may feel comfortable or credentialed to give. I think putting the administrator in place will smooth the process and hopefully open the door for more volunteers to be able to speak up and to be able to contribute to our town, because we need that. And we also need to move the day-to-day forward. We have a $20 million budget. We're working hard, but we really do need the professionalism in the office. And my last statement's going to be, the town meeting versus the ballot, the ballot's a great thing, but what the ballot doesn't have is this discussion, and that's what town meeting has. It allows you to ask your questions, it allows you to give an informed decision. I readily admit that before I was very involved, I made some bad choices at the ballot, because I thought I had the answers, and I didn't. And now that I attend finance board meetings, I attend board of selectmen meetings, I attend the town meeting, I do feel I'm making educated decisions. And we make our recommendations informed and carefully. We hope that you support these two articles.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Something new?
Yes.
Okay.
Always something new. Daniel McDonald. My concern is, a couple of years back, we started off with a part-time town planner, and that morphed into a full-time job. Now, what I'm hearing is, we need a town administrator, and it seems to me that we just need a rock-solid financial person in, in town to mind the store. So, the key is selection of a person to collect the funds, collect all the taxes, pay the bills, and you need a professional in that position. I don't necessarily think we need somebody that's a higher-level executive position. You're gonna pay more money for that person. Sounds to me like we need a treasurer and assistant treasurer. So, as you increase the bureaucracy, you're gonna increase salaries, benefits, and pensions, and you, the taxpayers, are gonna foot the bill on all of that. So, I don't know that this town has grown to such an accelerated pace that our services in town have expanded. The way I see it, I don't want any more services. Educate my kids, plow the streets, pick my trash up. My house is on fire, send a truck over, please. But shut the lights off and go home and enjoy your family. But I think this is an expansion of the bureaucracy. I think it's gonna water...
Can I just, I just want to interrupt for one second. I'd love you going. Technically, and I just checked with Bill, or Town Council, if you are speaking against the recommendation of the board of selectmen...
Yes.
You need to be speaking from the audience as, as an individual.
I don't mind doing that. I'm, I'm...
Versatile.
Yes, yeah, just, I didn't know if he was gonna, I mean...
All right, there we go again. I was elected on apathy. I majored in it at high school, and I continue on. All right, I'm doing a good job. But I like to take a contrarian approach sometimes. Think about your democracy, okay? We have a grassroots system here with town meeting. We have a small town with volunteers. We have a, a board of selectmen that was expanded until, from three to five. I was the chair of the Government Advisory Committee, affectionately referred to as GAC. And I voted against it. I thought it would water down the system. There's a, there's a balancing act going on here. If you have three members of the board of selectmen, I feel there's a possibility you could have the good old boy system, and there's some pitfalls to that. Term limits, to me, would be the better way to go. Might be off-topic, but as, as, if you decide to hire a town administrator, you're giving more power to the, to the bureaucracy than you are to the selectmen. You're taking power away from the elected officials that you have absolute control over, and if you don't believe that, think back three years when you voted me out of office. Okay? So, democracy does work. If somebody you don't like is in office, you can bump them out of the chair. Try doing that to somebody on a three-year contract and dump, dumping them because of cause. They lawyer up, and you'll lawyer up too, and you'll probably back down. The real world is, it's really difficult to uproot a bureaucrat, especially a high-powered, high-paid bureaucrat. So, I'm leery of expansion of the bureaucracy in town. I don't want the deep state here in my town of Groveland. I don't want it to become a swamp, and that's my two cents on it. Think hard about this question. It's a, it's a, it's a equivalent of a constitutional change to what's going on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? I think we've, okay?
Mitchell Croner, 3 Cannon Hill Road Extension. I've heard the points on both sides. Frankly, I think this comes down to semantics. We had Denise, who I guess I would call a strong finance director. She did a lot of things. I don't think her job description included. The selectmen can correct me on that. And now, we're looking at a town administrator. I'm not sure if weak town administrator is the word, but we're certainly not looking at a town manager. Maybe it would help if one of the selectmen or finance board or Joe would... What power will the selectmen still have? I think there's some confusion that the town administrator's gonna be a world of difference from a finance director, and I don't think that's the case.
We can get an answer.
I'll let Joe do the technical talk, but here's the simple truth. The town administrator would have the same oversight of the budget and everything as the finance director, in addition to administrative duties to help keep the town running smoothly while the board of selectmen isn't meeting. It's a, it's a simple change, but it's a key and important change for us to keep talented people here, because, again, we will still have a treasurer, we'll still have an accountant, we'll still have an assistant treasurer. We'll have all the financial support, but now we'll have somebody guiding, mentoring, and organizing this, and making sure it's running smoothly in between our meetings. It makes perfect sense for your tax dollars to be well-managed, and the board of selectmen will still have the authority to hire and fire. We're not giving up our authority. We are a check and balance on anybody that we hire. We're there, speaking for you and listening to your concerns, so when you tell us that you don't like the way somebody did something, or something bothers you, we listen. We just, we talk about it. We try to decide how we can accommodate you. That's what we're here for. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Mr. Watson, Selectman Watson brought up money, so I'm gonna talk about money very briefly. The town administrator is budgeted for $120,000. This town administrator's gonna be part of a financial team and a management team, consistent of a treasurer-collector and also an assistant treasurer-collector. We won't have a clerk, and certainly we must have, and we will have, an accountant. So, the total increase in the budget is .23 percent, just slightly under a quarter percent more. And this entire financial management team consists of 1.51 percent of our overall budget. So, we're not packing red tape and massive, heavy administration here. We're bringing in professional people to help volunteers that are way over their limit personally, professionally, and spiritually as to how much they can do for this town.
So, do we have any other questions? Not whether you're for or against it, but is there, okay, I, I have moved the question. Do people want to move the question, or do we want to?
Do we need to vote?
Okay, it doesn't have to be official, but do we consent? Do people, who, whoever wants to move the question, say aye.
Aye.
Whoever does not want to move the question, say no. All right. We have a motion and second under article five for favorable action. Just so we refresh everyone's memory, so all in favor of article five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
That is majority in favor. Passes.
Mr. Moderator?
So, yes.
Mr. Moderator, question to count. Like a show of hands.
It was pretty clear to me, it's not a two-thirds vote. Okay, it takes, I just been informed, it takes seven people to question to count. We have seven people that want to question to count. One, two, three, four, five.
Go ahead, start.
That's fine, okay. We have people to count? Okay, so all in favor of article five, raise your hand, and keep your hand raised until somebody who's counting you point. So, we're gonna split this half.
That was my first task at the town, and I was gonna...
Do you have a question?
I don't know how much they cost, but...
So, they can vote?
Tabulator, yeah.
She's, do we have to put our hand down now? I think she counted. I don't know. I don't know everybody. I may have magical eye now. Like, there's my neighbor, move my down, because I'm watching you.
Okay, all opposed to article five, raise your hand.
I almost threw wet fresh water bottle.
All right, it's, according to my math, it's 79 in favor, 21 against. Is that what you have? Article passes. Okay, back to article four. To see if the town will vote to petition the general court to repeal chapter 60 of the acts and resolves of 1998, creating a Department of Finance and Budget in the town of Groveland, or taking another action relative thereto. The article is submitted by the board of selectmen. The board of selectmen recommends favorable action. Government Study Committee recommends favorable action. Finance Board recommends favorable action. A motion?
Move favorable? Second?
Motion and second. Any discussion? All right, no discussion. All in favor of article four, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
And again, I'm gonna say that is a majority in favor. Article six. To see if the town will vote to amend the wetland protection bylaw and regulation to correct grammatical and spelling errors and make other housekeeping and non-substantive changes, including deletion of unused definitions, and to renumber, recaption, arrange, and sequence its various sections, all is set forth in the draft of Wetlands Protection Bylaw and Regulation Changes in Appendix C, and which document has been placed on file with the town clerk, or taken another action relative thereto. The article was submitted by the Conservation Commission. Note, this article proposes to make non-substantive corrective amendments to the town's wetland bylaw. The board of selectmen recommend favorable action. Conservation Commission recommends favorable action. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable? Second?
A motion and second. Any discussion?
This is a really long article.
All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor of article six, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimous. All right, we have a series of zoning bylaws coming up. I believe it's seven through 12, is that right? So, for each of those, it takes a two-third majority to pass. So, if it's not unanimous, we're probably gonna have a hand vote, okay? Article seven. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw section 50...
Move to dispense with the reading of this article. It's kind of lengthy.
Second.
Yes, it is. We have a motion to dispense with the reading. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of dispensing with the reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All right, motion passed to dispense with the reading. I imagine, though, people might want to read the article before they vote on it, so why don't we take a minute or two here to speed-read through this? Just as people are reading, I've been informed, and it's not written down here, but we need to have the report of the planning board, because they had a vote on this. Do we have someone here representing the planning board?
Could I do a point of information quickly?
Sure.
Through the moderator, Town Council, is the new statute now state that it's a majority vote on this, or is it still two-thirds on a zoning change?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, it's still two-thirds for zoning bylaw changes.
So, do we have a report from the planning board?
I don't see anybody from the planning board yet.
So, what do we do in that case?
If it was more than 20, if it voted more than 21 days ago, it's okay. If the planning board met within 21 days, you can't vote.
Do we know when the planning board met?
No, I mean, I...
Keep reading, we're figuring this out. Do you have, yes?
Do you have a force of plan, a planning board member?
Oh, great, thank you.
Yep. It is favorable action from the planning board...
Okay.
For the motions for, the articles of...
For, for all of them?
For all of them.
Seven through 12.
Yes.
Can we take that?
Yeah.
So, we don't do, okay, thank you.
Right, okay.
So, we have a motion and a second. As people are reading, if there are questions, if you want to line up, I mean, it's pretty lengthy. If you have a question you know you're gonna ask, just come to the mic. Go ahead, you can ask your question.
Greg LeBrecq, 11 Baldwin Terrace. I know these sound good in theory. Let me tell you what the practice will be. In our apartments, people got them, they knew what they were getting into. Your blood relatives were gonna move into it, and when it was over, they were gonna move out, and if you, someone bought your house, they could reapply for it. This is like, basically allowing people to add on to their houses for non-blood relatives, and what you're going to get is people taking advantage of it, of course. Now, we have a small town, nine square miles, and believe it or not, most of it's owned by the state and the town. So, this is pretty significant. You're looking at is infill. Second of all, what you're doing now is adding, when people do this, they might, you might gain $400, $500 on their property tax bill. But they put a kid in the school, it's $7,500. And I'm telling you right now, I'm the business manager for the school district, the days of not seeing overrides are over. Matter of fact, if the House and the Senate don't get together on the thing, you'll be back here in the fall looking for $250,000 to cover this year. Even if they do keep it, moving forward, that's gonna be covered. Next year, we'll have no way to do it. You could have a school budget increase next year of nearly $800,000, doing nothing. Right now, the way the system is working for the assessments, development is not your friend. I don't like to see the, a town change. I don't want to see people arguing with their neighbors as they put little additions on their houses for people who want their blood relatives to just rent out and create rental units. I don't think it's a good idea for us. I think it'll change the way the town looks, the way the town acts, and it will certainly change how much goes into your tax bill. Or, without having to go for overrides that pass, some of the positions you're creating tonight that you think are a good idea, you will not be able to afford. So, I would, for this one and the one about shared driveways, I would say no. Development right now is not your friend.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Mitchell Crooner, Three Cannon Hill Road Extension. I'm gonna give the opposite viewpoint than Greg did. I've been a real estate lawyer in town for forty years. I've represented a lot of elderly people over that time period. And a lot of them would have liked to stay in town, but the town's too expensive. And one possibility under this bylaw would be that if there were an in-law apartment, an accessory apartment, an elderly person who otherwise would have to leave the town they grew up in, lived in, raised their children, could now live in an apartment. Remember, under Paragraph Three, five-three, this is limited to nine-hundred square feet, which is thirty feet by thirty feet, in which you have to have a kitchen, a living area, a bathroom. I really doubt a family of four is gonna fit into a nine-hundred-square-foot apartment. The other thing this offers is, you know, I know for teachers, police officers, people starting out, this would be a way for them to live in the community where they work. It would allow them to get a foothold in the community. I know under the state law, it is not officially affordable housing, but I'd really like you to look at it as affordable housing. It would be bringing a wider variety of professionals into town, young professionals, and I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Oops, yeah, right up here. Wait, just Greg, just one second, just hear first.
If it would be possible to hear from our town planner and the building inspector on this issue, as they were fundamental, I believe, in helping craft these articles.
I don't think, are they here? I don't-
Yes, they are.
Oh, they're here, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, they're, okay, yep. I can't see with the mask. Did you guys have anything to add? And now, neither of you live in town, correct? So it's at the will of the town meeting. So we have to have actual votes, allow them to speak. So, all in favor of allowing our town planner and building inspector to speak, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Alright, so they can speak when we'd like to, but- If you, yep.
Hi, I'm Sam Jocelyn, the building inspector for the town of Groveland. I've been here for about seven years now. Prior to this, I was in the town of Newbury. I wrote the same bylaw in Newbury. When I came to town, we adjusted the buzzer-
Yeah, just look, get right into it, yep.
There we go. I just didn't want it to squeal. So I did write this bylaw with the help of the town planner. It was something that I implemented in the town of Newbury. Was based on the fact that people do what they need to do. And I would rather have them come and permit rental units, or, at the time, everyone was claiming it's an in-law unit. Most people, when they weren't allowed, were just doing it anyway. Because if I want my in-laws to come into town, I'm moving them in, whether you say it or not. This gives us an opportunity to get in, inspect the units. It also adds to tax revenue when they do come in. And yet Greg's right, it doesn't cover what a typical kid costs in the school. He's absolutely right. But people are gonna do it either way. So I'd rather get in, I'd rather allow the rental units, because basically, when I get informed that a relative's moved out and someone else has moved in, when I go knock on the door and say you're related, unless they're really not too bright, of course, they say yes. I can't do blood tests, I can't, you know, ask for ID, it's just a nod of the head, yes, we are related, and I walk away. At least with this bylaw, it allows them to do it again without skirting our bylaws, without having to lie. The honest people are the only ones that get hurt, because they don't do it because it's not allowed. The dishonest ones still do it. In Newbury, we had, in ten years, I monitored this, we had just, I think it was either ten or eleven new units come in. It did not make or break the town. I don't think it's gonna, you know, destroy the town here either. The key to this is it is owner-occupied. One of the units has to be owner-occupied. So you don't have absentee landlords going off to Florida, renting out their house, not knowing what's going on. It's a direction the state wants us to go as well. To allow for college-age students, couples starting out, retired people, to have a smaller unit to live in. As Mitch said, it's nine-hundred square feet. That's maximum. That doesn't allow a whole lot of room. It, you know, it's a nice little apartment, but yeah, you shouldn't be having tons of kids in. Could someone squeeze a family of four in there? Sure. You know, is it likely? Not really. But, I was, just wanted to give my two cents, because it really has worked out in the past in the other town that I've worked in. I'm hoping it'll work the same here.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Alice Twombly, ninety-one Seven Star Road. I'm sixty-one years old. This is actually very timely for me, because I'm looking at options to be able to stay in town, because I am like, on the edge of maybe I'm not gonna be able to stay here in a few years when I retire. One of my questions was, how did they arrive at the sixteen-hundred square feet? My current home has a footprint of twenty-four by forty. I have one child left, so I'm almost there. Pretty much, I live downstairs, which is one thousand, it's actually one-thousand-and-eighty-eight square feet. Upstairs is probably a little less than that, and my daughter is twenty-four, she lives up there. No kitchen, just bedrooms up there, but still. So how do we arrive at sixteen-hundred feet? And my concern is, again, you know, when you divide it up into in-law apartment, why does it have, why does one side have to be sixteen-hundred square feet? Because again, my concern is, you know, more people coming into town. If I were to be able to rent, live in nine-hundred square feet and rent out sixteen-hundred square feet or more, it seems like, you know, more students in the school. So it seems like smaller is better. So when I look at this and I say to encourage, and I see, we wanna encourage more economic and energy-efficient use, as I'm looking at building out my property possibly, because I have acreage, I can do that, net-zero housing and energy-efficient housing is significantly smaller than sixteen-hundred square feet for an empty nester like me. So I think we should consider these things. So I'd like to ask the planning board, how do they come to sixteen-hundred square foot minimum?
Do we have an answer for that question?
So, I'll speak for Rebecca, just, because I took the lead on this article. The sixteen-hundred was a, I don't wanna call it arbitrary, but it was the compromise that we came to for having a primary unit and a subordinate unit. Because we didn't wanna have a series of duplexes or things like that. We really wanted to try and protect the look of the town that people have mentioned they're concerned with, to have it look like a single family. The idea was to have your standard house with a garage next to it and empty space above, that you could potentially use it as an apartment, or the garage itself, or a small addition off to the side. So, as of right now, that's what we've been using. It seems to accommodate most people in town. Yeah, there have been a couple that have come in and said, hey, I'm not quite there. We do give the zoning board a ten percent leeway on square footage. I know that really doesn't get you if you're a thousand square feet. But we felt we needed to make a cutoff somewhere, and that was the compromise that we came to.
Thank you. Another question?
Could you give us a definition of borders or lodgers, just out of curiosity?
Gotta move my chair over.
Yeah.
Alright, so borders or lodgers are defined through the state building code. And we've used the same definitions. What we're trying to do, we being myself and the town planner, is as we write articles, have language match in the enforcing documents. As the building inspector and zoning enforcement officer, when I have one word mean two different things, makes it really hard to do my job. I feel very, you know, bipolar. Just, you know, swinging from one way to the other. So, we're trying to make it match the definitions with the building code. Borders and lodgers. When you get into it, it is someone that would be renting rooms. So you wouldn't have, we wouldn't allow you to put on that nine-hundred-square-foot addition, have, say, two small bedrooms in it, and rent out, you know, sublet those smaller rooms. So we just, we wanna make sure that it is rented to a person or people, that it's just that family, I guess, staying in there, as much as you can call it a family. And not be sub-rent, renting out rooms either in the main house or in the subordinate unit.
Thank you.
You speaking against the recommendation?
Pretty much.
I mean, that's the way that it goes.
Daniel McDonald, White Lane, new selectmen. This can radically change the town more than the town administrator. Basically, you can turn it into a two-family town. One of the reasons I moved here in two thousand and five, was it was a nice, nice town. Single-family homes, leave it to Beaverville, you know, it was nice. If you have tenements in this town and you let everyone turn their house into a two-family, which is what this is gonna do. Right now, you can let family in. We have an in-law apartment bylaw, it works, it limits the growth in town. You want more transients in town? You can have more kids in the Bagno Elementary School, maybe you'll have to build an addition here. Heard Greg LeBrecq talk. The bills are gonna come. Students, you know, take from a guy with triplets, I mean, it costs a lot of money. You're gonna pay for it. You're gonna pay for my kids, their kids, everybody's kids. You can't control where these people are coming from. So I'd like to maintain the character of the town. And if you have people that buy homes here, they have a vested interest in it. If you're just passing through, what do you care? You know, crime goes up, everything else goes up. Your taxes are gonna go up, I think it's gonna change the town radically. I'm vehemently opposed to this one. The other one's administrative and bureaucracy. This one is really something that's gonna hit home. You don't know who's gonna be living next door to you.
Alright, yep, step right to the mic.
Chair McCumsky, twenty-seven Broad Street. I just wanna make it known that the people who are talking, even though they come from the board, are stating their opinion and not fact. We did talk, we just heard from him, who was from another town, who said, you know, the other town did not see this influx, we did not see all this. So the, you know, the professional of the group, who's actually a subject matter expert, gave us what we wanted to hear. Just wanted you all to know that. I also think, and correct me if I'm wrong, this clears up some of the bylaw that we have in place right now, that kind of, I think there's some of the rules about the connectivity between the houses. It clears it up, it makes it a little bit more easier to understand the bylaws. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Alright, so don't get into fear-mongering about it, listen to what the professionals are saying about it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Greg, did you wanna, you- If you wanna speak, come up to the mic.
The mic's up too high. Sue Lynn, Two Stoughton Road. As I, looking at this, this article does not pertain anything to people that have septic systems. My home is an older home, and I have a septic system. I would not be able to do this to my house. Is that correct?
Go ahead, Sam.
So, septic systems would still, your Title Five regulations would still apply. This will limit what some people can do. Just like if you, you know, wanna expand your house with more bedrooms and don't have a septic to do it, same goes with this. It's gotta meet Title Five criteria. You can either enlarge the system to make it work, or if you don't have the soils to make a working system, then yeah, it would exempt you from putting that on.
Other comments? Yes, no? Go ahead, Mitch, go ahead.
I don't wanna get into a debate with Town Council through the moderator, but I would like Town Council to explain why under the, Chapter three fifty-eight of the Acts of twenty-twenty, signed by Governor Baker on January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, changing many of the zoning changes to majority rule, why this one does not fall under that.
Okay, let's get that question answered.
My opinion remains the same. I can't answer the specific question, but I checked with the zoning attorneys in my firm before I came here this evening, and it requires a two-thirds vote.
Okay.
Just a rebuttal to the, let the professionals handle it. Maybe I need more credentials, law license, real estate broker's license, CPA, maybe I should go back to school. But anyways, that's not only my personal opinion that it'll change the character of town, it's my professional opinion. When you bring in more tenements, you will radically change this town. I moved here from Salem, Massachusetts, they built hundreds of apartments. That city will never be the same. So you people think about it. You make your beds, and you're gonna sleep in it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anything new, anything want to hear? Ready to vote? Alright, we have a motion and a second under Article Seven for favorable action. So all in favor of Article Seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Alright, so that is too close to call. We're gonna do a hand count. So all in favor of Article Seven, raise your hand, please.
Yes, I do, yeah. I think I made the motion, didn't I? I've been just trying to keep up with that.
Okay, all opposed to Article Seven, raise your hand, please. Sixty-three in favor, thirty-five opposed. That is not a two-thirds vote. It does not pass. Just before we proceed with any more of these zoning articles, again, our Town Council would like to speak.
This is in response to the earlier question about Chapter two fifty-eight of the Acts of twenty-twenty, and whether it changed the two-thirds requirement for the zoning bylaw. I just Googled it, in the Acts, Chapter two fifty-eight of the Acts of twenty-twenty, there's an act relative to medical specialty camp, medication administration. There's nothing in there about zoning bylaw changes.
Okay, let's move on. Article Eight.
Bill, excuse me, it was three fifty-eight of twenty-twenty, three-five-eight.
We're gonna carry on, we're doing a little more research. Article Eight, to see if the town of Groveland amended zoning bylaw, Article Two, Definition, Section Fifty-two dot one, terms identified to add common driveways as follows. Common driveway, driveway which provides access to more than one lot, each of which has at least the minimum required frontage on a street, as required by the zoning bylaw. Article submitted by the planning board, requires a two-thirds majority. Note, developments continue to seek excessive waivers from the subdivision control law in order to create a road that functions as a shared drive, in efforts to meet the standards for roadway construction, for roadway construction, the design is poorly impacted. This change will provide better land use and ensure appropriate access. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action, the planning board recommends favorable action. Do we have a motion, a second, please?
Move favorable? Second?
Alright, we have a motion, a second. And do we have, can we, just before we have a discussion, anything different from our Town Council? As far as what he-
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I wanna get this right, so if there has been a change in the law, I don't know about, I will find out and I'll let you know. It makes a difference on that vote. And is Attorney Cromer here? So I'm looking at three fifty-eight, Attorney Cromer, of the Acts of twenty-twenty. It's an act enabling partnership for growth. So I still don't see, I could be wrong. I, it wouldn't be the first time in thirty years, but I, my firm stays on top of this stuff. We have a motion, a second for Article eight for favorable action, so we have discussion. Go ahead.
Alice Twombly, 917 Star Road. I've looked around town. There's a couple of places where they, I've looked at the common driveways, and I'm wondering, I see here developments continue to seek excessive waivers. I'm looking at some of the driveways around, and I'm like, 18 feet wide? That's a road. That's not a driveway. So if I own 13 acres, and, you know, if one of my kids wants to put a place out back, or two of my kids want to put a place out back, I can actually legally do that. I have the frontage. Why do I need an 18-foot road? Why can't it be a common, a narrower driveway? What do we, what do we have right now for a width?
Can we get an answer to that, how wide the driveway needs to be?
Sorry, Rebecca Oldham, Town Planner. It's currently 25, on a 50-foot right-of-way.
25 feet wide?
On a 50-foot right-of-way.
For a driveway?
For a roadway.
For a road?
Yes.
Okay. But were you asking how wide the roads are, or how wide the driveways are?
Common driveway right now, like a 137th, 139th, King Street, or, um, we just drive that way. We don't have a current requirement for common driveways and/or driveway width currently, which is why we wanted to specify that. Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Other questions?
Alice Twombly, 917 Star Road. I just want to say that I think 18 feet wide is excessive.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions, concerns?
Sorry, I don't mean to keep doing this. This is more like a question. If, I'm looking at Article nine, how it dovetails into this apparently. If all the access lots have to have the normal legal frontage and be Form A, and all the rest of this stuff, why do you need to share a driveway? It means it's a buildable lot. So I'm trying to figure this out. Like, unless you're trying to get around the idea of putting more than one house on a lot that only supports one house. So I'm just, if they have to have the normal all zoning stuff in front, generally, why would they need to have a shared driveway?
Is that something that can be answered, why people are asking for waivers for these things? Why this makes sense?
Bob, there, fourth. It's because if, say if you have three lots, and you had one access point into them three lots, they are even, in the Form A lots, but you have wetlands in front of it, you can own, you can go through one wetlands crossing instead of three wetlands crossings. So we're saving three wetlands, two more wetland crossings. That's why we're trying to do a common drive. Long as they hit the Form A 150-foot right-of-way, or areas, then you're fine. And in her case, she's asking why we need an 18-foot driveway. We're not, not a regular standard driveway unless it's a, a common driveway. That's why we're going to do an 18-foot driveway. A regular driveway is, I think, 12 feet. So that's a question on that one, so.
All right, thank you. Other questions, concerns?
I'd just like to comment that it's a matter of aesthetics. If I can put in three homes and only have one entry from the road, to me, it's more aesthetically pleasing for my particular lot. That's all. And what Bob said, it's wetlands, I have wetlands too, so.
Thank you. Other questions, concerns? Nope? Good? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of dispensing the reading of Article nine, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Again, just take a minute to read it, and then if you do have questions, just make your way towards the mic.
Okay, did, now I forget, did I ask?
I didn't ask for the motion. No, you just, you just had to read. You didn't read the recommendations either. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't do that part yet.
All right, so while you're reading, I just want to make sure that I don't screw up here. We, we dispense with the reading, but we still, I need to read, the Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The planning board recommends favorable action. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move favorable.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for favorable action under Article nine. Do we have questions? Concerns? Are we ready to vote? Okay. All in favor of Article nine, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I'm going to call that a two-thirds in favor. Passes. Okay, Article nine.
Make a motion to dispense with the reading of the article. It's a little bit lengthy.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of dispensing the reading of Article nine, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Again, just take a minute to read it, and then if you do have questions, just make your way towards the mic.
Okay, did, now I forget, did I ask?
I didn't ask for the motion. No, you just, you just had to read. You didn't read the recommendations either. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't do that part yet.
All right, so while you're reading, I just want to make sure that I don't screw up here. We, we dispense with the reading, but we still, I need to read, the Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The planning board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for favorable action under Article nine. Do we have questions? Concerns? Are we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor of Article nine, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Again, that is a two-thirds in favor. Passes. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to amend its zoning bylaws to delete Section 50-6.1 Flood Plane Overlay District in its entirety and insert in its place a new section 50-6.1 Flood Plane Overlay District in the form placed on file with the town clerk and an appendix D or take any other action relative thereto. The article is submitted by the building inspector. It requires a two-thirds majority. I read the note. It says, "The National Flood Insurance Program in coordination with FEMA have mandated all municipal floodplain bylaws include specific language in their floodplain bylaw. Failure to do so will result in the municipality from being eligible for flood insurance under the NFIP. Required information was mostly clarification of existing language, changing existing terms and language to pair with the requirements of state building code, as well as updated terminology changes. A list of changes depicting the changes made to the existing bylaw to create the new bylaw is on file with the town clerk and included as an appendix to the warrant." So the Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The planning board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action under Article 10. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Article 10, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That one is unanimous in favor. Article 11, to see if the town of Groveland will amend its zoning bylaw to delete column Site Plan Review III from Section 50-4.5 Table of Uses and delete Note III Applicable Only if Use Requires Construction of New Building Structure. Article is submitted by the town planner, requires a two-thirds majority. Note, the column in the table does not provide criteria in which to consider when determining if site plan approval is required. This leads to confusion, delay in process. Section 5-13.2 provides applicability criteria. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The planning board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action under Article 11. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Article 10, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That one is unanimous in favor. Article 11, to see if the town of Groveland will amend its zoning bylaw to delete column Site Plan Review III from Section 50-4.5 Table of Uses and delete Note III Applicable Only if Use Requires Construction of New Building Structure. Article is submitted by the town planner, requires a two-thirds majority. Note, the column in the table does not provide criteria in which to consider when determining if site plan approval is required. This leads to confusion, delay in process. Section 5-13.2 provides applicability criteria. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The planning board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action under Article 11. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Article 11, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That is unanimous in favor. Article 12.
Make a motion to dispense with the reading of this article. It's rather lengthy.
Second.
All in favor of dispensing the reading of Article 12, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Just before I forget, I'll get down to the recommendations while you're reading. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The planning board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action under Article 12. So just take a minute to review this. There is a note that I can read for those watching at home. It says, "This amendment provides a clear development and use thresholds as to when review under site plan approval is applicable. The amendment provides clarification of minor site plan and when a project can be classified as minor, and the process for review is a minor site plan. The amendment provides a clear explanation as to when a waiver may be granted and the process in which to request a waiver."
This one's small, yeah. These are all the CPA ones of the past.
Again, if there's going to be any questions, just make your way to the microphone while we're reading. Do we need a little more time, or are we ready to discuss and vote? Ready to move on? Do we have any questions? Any discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second for favorable action under Article 12. All in favor of Article 12, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That is unanimous. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $21,000 from the Community Preservation Committee General Reserve FY 2021 to be made available to the New Mill Pond Phase 1 Cleanup and Land Survey. The project is to be managed by the Groveland Board of Selectmen and the Community Preservation Coordinator under the CPA category of Recreation, or take any other action relative thereto. The article is submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. Note, the project would provide funds to improve town-owned land parcels that abut a property owned by a local church. It was once used as swimming and skating recreation area for the town, known as New Mill Pond. It is time for the town to clean up the town-owned site, clearly define the boundaries of the parcel, and adjoining town land, and begin to plan for restoring its past recreational use for town residents. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable.
Oh, hang on. Community Preservation Committee recommends favorable action, but I appreciate that. Go ahead.
Move favorable action.
All right. We have a motion and a second under Article 13. Can I just ask a question? This is what's behind where the water department? Is that right?
Yes, it is. It's that little pond area.
Yes. I remember when there was water there, we used to swim in that.
I heard the Kermit Cross was a lifeguard there.
We may have that. All right, so do we have any questions or discussion under Article 13? All right, we will take a vote. All in favor of Article 13, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Did I hear one no?
No.
All right, it is majority passes. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $408,000 from the Community Preservation Committee Housing Reserve FY 2021 to be made available for the Groveland Housing Authority Buy Down Program. The project is to be managed by the Groveland Housing Authority and the Community Preservation Coordinator under the CPA category of County Housing, or take any other action relative thereto. The article is submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. Note, the project would provide funds to promote locally-supported affordable housing efforts. Our town planner has established the guidelines, eligibility requirements, application, and cost, also identified the required funds and staff to operate the program. A program of this nature will help close the affordability gap for income-eligible households looking to buy a home in Groveland. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action. The Community Preservation Committee recommends favorable action.
Move favorable action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion?
Greg LeBrec, 11 Baldwin Terrace. I think you get a typo there. It's not county housing, it's community housing.
Uh, yeah, I read it, yeah.
You might want to amend that, so it looks good in the thing. The second thing is, where can I find all these guidelines, eligibility requirements, applications, costs that have been created? I mean, this kind of looks like you're using our tax dollars to give to other people so they can move into, help them move into the town. And I'd like to see what those, what that is.
I don't know. Mike Dempsey, yeah.
Yes, so Mike Dempsey, Community Preservation Committee Chair. Those guidelines are on the, the planning board website, I believe that's correct, right, Rebecca?
Yes.
Ms. Mike, is that, at the last sentence, it's questioned that, the wording, under the CPA category of county housing, should it be?
Yeah, it should be community.
So Kathy, you made the motion for favorable action. If you would just amend your motion for favorable action to say favorable action as read, changing county to community?
Yes. Favorable action as read, changing the word county to community housing in the last sentence.
So that was the motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
All right. Is that good, Bill? Okay. All right, so any other discussion? Let's have a vote. Article four, all in favor of Article 14, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I believe that is a majority in favor. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $18,000 from the Community Preservation Committee General Reserve FY 2021 to be made available for establishing a new crosstown recreational trail. The project is to be managed by the Groveland Conservation Commission and the Community Preservation Coordinator under the CPA category of Recreation, or take any other action relative thereto. The article is submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. Note, the project would provide funds to establish a new recreational resource in town that would connect several town-owned and nearby properties from Main Street to the Crane Pond Wildlife Area with existing trails and new trail easements. This resource would encourage more recreational use of the properties and provide another health-wise option for town residents. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action. Community Preservation Committee recommends favorable action.
Move favorable action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Article 15, any discussion? No discussion. We'll take a vote. All in favor of Article 15, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Majority in favor. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of up to $97,000 from the Community Preservation Funds General Reserve FY 2021 to be made available for the Groveland Community Trail supplemental funds to complete the current 100% design of the project. The project is to be managed by the Open Space and Trails Committee and the Community Preservation Coordinator under the CPA category of Recreation, or take any action relative thereto. Article submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. Note, the Groveland Community Trail project was previously funded for the design portion of the project using CPA funds. The trail will receive up to $4 million in matching funds from MassDOT to build the trail. The project has been approved, and construction is expected to begin in the fall of this year. These funds will be used to complete the 100% design plan for the trail that has to be extended due to the state timeline. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action. Community Preservation Committee recommends favorable action.
Move favorable action.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Article 16, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. I think I heard one no, so that is a majority in favor, passes. Article 17, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of up to $31,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve FY-2021 to be made available for completion of an accessible bathroom and a ramp to a passive recreation area at B.C. Park. The project is to be managed by the Groveland Conservation Commission and the Community Preservation Coordinator under the CPA category of Recreation, or take any action relative thereto. The article was submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. Note, the project would provide funds for the completion of an accessible bathroom and a new ramp to a passive recreation area at B.C. Park. The total project cost is $46,000 and will use remaining CPA funds of $15,000 from the 2018 Phase 1 CPA project to complete it. ADA compliance improvements will provide safer access to the facility for the public and people with disabilities." The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action. Community Preservation Committee recommends favorable action.
Move favorable action.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion?
Kim Jackson, Tent Park Street. This, is this a ramp that goes into Johnson Pond?
We'll get that answered.
No, this is at the rear of the main facility, up to the backyard.
Thank you, any other questions? All right, let's take a vote. Article 17, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That is unanimous in favor. Article 18, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of up to $24,000 from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve FY 2021 to be made available for installation of fencing at Historic River View Cemetery. The project is to be managed by the Groveland Cemetery Commission and the Community Preservation Coordinator under the CPA category of Historic Preservation, or take any action relative thereto. The article was submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. Note, the project would provide funds for installation of fencing on the eastern side of the River View Cemetery, which abuts the Billis Way residential housing development. This will create a definitive separation boundary between the River View Cemetery and the new housing development and preserve the historic nature of the cemetery." The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends favorable action. Community Preservation Committee recommends favorable action.
Move favorable action.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of Article 18, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Majority in favor. Hang on for a second. We have a clarification.
Mr. Moderator, through you, I stand corrected. Attorney Cromer has handed me a cellphone, which has a letter from Jonathan, and I've now lost it. Jonathan Eichman of our office in February of the year 2021, and in, now I can't cite the statute now because I lost it, but there was a special act enacted in February, which allows, um, the type of accessory apartment being proposed by Article 7 to be passed by a majority vote. It did not amend the Article, or Chapter 40A, Section 5 in any other way other than for the one particular type of accessory apartment, which was the subject matter of Article 7, to be carried by majority vote. So first of all, my apologies. Secondly, thank you Attorney Cromer, wherever you are. We want to get this right, and my opinion is now that for Article 7, a majority vote would have carried it. So again, my apologies. Attorney Cromer, you can reclaim the cellphone here. Thank you.
So just to make sure that.
Again, uh, so my opinion has been changed. It is that Article 7 may be passed by majority vote. Thank you, Attorney Cromer, again.
So, we had a hand count under Article 7, and it was 63 in favor, 35 opposed. Under two-thirds, that did not pass, but simple majority does pass. Thank you. All right, where was I?
I don't think we made a motion on 18 yet.
What's that?
I don't think we made any motions. I think you're reading the.
Article 13, right?
Article 18, yeah.
I mean, 18, yeah, 18.
Okay. Hang on just a second, sorry. We just finished.
18, yes.
Okay, now Article 19, "See if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of $28,500."
No, he's doing 19. I didn't think we voted 18, did we?
We voted 18, it was a majority. There was, there were one or two against, but it was a majority favor. So Article 19, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of $28,500 from the Community Preservation General Reserve FY 2021 to be made for the purpose of preservation through management planning and removal of invasive species and undesirable weeds for improved access, passive recreation, use, fishing, and boating on Johnson's Pond. The project, Johnson's Pond Weed Removal Phase 2, is to be managed by the Community Preservation Coordinator and the Conservation Commission under the CPA category of Recreation, or take any other action relative thereto. The article was submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. Note, this project is proposed for the continued preservation of Johnson's Pond, including improving access and uses of the pond by removing invasive species and weeds which are disrupting and harming water flow into the surrounding watershed. Weed removal will be done using hydroraking. The total project cost of $69,500 will be supplemented and matched by a state grant and previously voted CPA funds equalling $41,000. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action. The Community Preservation Committee recommends favorable action. We have a motion, please.
Move favorable action?
Second.
Motion and second for favorable action under Article 19. Any discussion? Just step to the mic, please.
Dick Hodges, still residing at 35 Union Street. I'm just wondering, what part of Johnson, I've heard, this is rumored, I just want someone to answer this. What part of Johnson Pond is owned by Havrell? And what part of Johnson Pond do we own? And are we extending money to help out Havrell? Clean the weeds, or? I weed the garden all the time, and those things keep growing back up. And I do that for less than 28 grand.
So, I mean, if I recall, there was about 20 years ago, there was some research done, then it was determined that the state owned it, but can you speak to that? I mean, there was, the Johnson Pond Committee did research and.
Yes, so Johnson's Pond is two-thirds in Groveland, one-third in Boxford, and zero in Havrell. Currently, Havrell controls the water rights to the pond, which means that they could potentially use it as a water source, but they have no intention of doing that. As a matter of fact, they would love if somebody else took it over. So we're pursuing that through the Water Department.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, go ahead.
Kim Jackson, Park Street. I understand that the pond does not belong in Havrell, but didn't the town of Groveland years ago sign a lease for the water rights to the city of Havrell that is like, extends for another 40 or 50 years? Why should we be, you know, they should be contributing something.
I think we have an answer.
Good point, but believe it or not, there is no such lease. Nobody has been able to find any lease. The people that control the use of Johnson's Pond is Mass DEP. They are the ones who will have to decide if they let Havrell go, what kind of terms Havrell is going to be under. And so that's why we are trying to pursue this from a point of view of Groveland water, because it would be favorable for DEP to hand control to another water department from Havrell to Groveland.
Can I just ask you a question, Mike? Because again, I mean, this goes back a long time ago when I was on the Board of Selectmen, I was early, mid 90s. But there was a report that was done, is that, does somebody have that? Is that research still available? Is it at Town Hall? Do we know it was done by the Johnson? Yeah.
I can't find it.
Okay, all right. All right, any other questions? Yep.
My name is Sean Hood, P. Park, Groveland. And what he's doing has been done before, and he's going to be doing it again.
Just step closer to the mic, sir.
The weeds are going to grow back, and it's a selfish reason for him, so we can have this news and people go, oh, the water. And the way that you're doing it, you're killing anything that's underneath the water. Anything from a tadpole to a frog to a turtle to a fish. Go down there and watch them, how they do it. It's savage, at least it does. Very selfish, Sean, your path.
Sir, please. Okay, um, is it, y'all set?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, we had the choice of three things. We had the choice of leaving the pond as it is, and it will, due to some excessive nitrogen phosphorus in the water, will eventually fill with weeds and close off, choking off oxygen in the water, killing fish, killing other things that are in the water. That's choice number one. Choice number two is to use chemicals in the water. Roundup is the most common one that's used. It will kill the weeds. It requires multiple applications over a number of years. But as I say, it adds chemicals to the water, killing fish, killing other animals and species. The third choice is hydroraking, which we used one other time, two years ago. Successfully cleared a path. So that's the option that we'll be using this time again, hydroraking. All three of those options obviously have some effect on species in the water, but the commission feels that hydroraking would be the best choice out of, particularly of those three, the chemicals or the, leaving it the way it is. Not to say that this is not, this is going to solve the problem. It's not a long-term solution. So the commission is working towards other solutions, such as aeration of the water and a few other ideas, because the science on this is advancing, and we're not sure where it's going. But in the meantime, short term, we have opened up a great recreation area for the town. Fishing is coming back, so we think that it's worth doing.
Other questions, comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
It's going to be done over and over again. You're not going to cure the problem.
Right.
And it's very expensive.
Over here.
I have a question for Mike. Daniel McDonald, again. Now, why can't you just raise the water level and reduce the weeds? I mean, they're growing in the shallow areas. I've been through there on a canoe with my boys, and the deeper the water, the fewer the weeds.
No, that's, that's part of the solution with the hydroraking. We did raise the level. Right now, the water level, we're trying to keep it at least 12 to six inches below what the maximum level is. The only problem is that there are some houses around the pond who have septic systems, and so there's at least one septic system. If the pond is kept at its maximum amount all year round, puts this one septic system in danger. So we kind of working with the Hydrated Department to keep it a little bit lower.
Mr. Moderator, one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Dempsey, just one more question. How long has it been, the situation down there? Have these weeds been there for five years, 10 years, 20 years, or longer? I mean, when did this all happen?
Well.
And why now, I guess?
The weeds have been there for a long time. I was just looking at some pictures of the pond a couple of weeks ago, and so I think as the other resident said, you know, the problem is not new. It's just that with more phosphorus and nitrogen in the water due to, you know, landscaping, fertilizers on people's grass, leaking septic systems, the problem has escalated in particular over the past five years. And again, part of it was due that the water level was too low. So that's why we feel keeping the water level up and doing the hydroraking will at least help us stem the tide against the excessive weed growth for at least a few years until we can come up with a long-term permanent solution.
All right, any other questions? Okay, we're going to take a vote. All in favor of Article 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We'll do it one more time. I think it was just, I think it was a majority yes, but all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Passes, majority. Article 20, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate a reserve from Community Preservation Fund fiscal year 2022, estimated annual revenues. The amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, debt service, community preservation projects, and other expenses with each item to be considered a separate appropriation." You can see the purpose here on the left-hand side. Set appropriations committee administrative expenses, $25,000. I guess that was reserves. Open space, $50,000. Historic resources, $50,000. Community housing, $50,000. Or take any other action relative thereto. The article was submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action. The Community Preservation Committee recommends favorable action.
Move favorable action.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action under Article 20. Any discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Article 20, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous in favor. Article 21, "To see if the town will vote to supplement each prior vote of the town that authorized the borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects to provide that in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 20. The premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes therunder, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds and notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized we borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied, or take any other action relative thereon or in relative relation thereto." Article submitted by the Finance Director. Note, this article allows the town a choice in regard to the treatment of bond premiums. We will be able to either apply the premiums to the issuance, thereby reducing the amount needed to borrow, or to place the premiums in a separate fund and appropriate them for a capital project with an equal or longer statutory borrowing term as the original term, or pay the issuance costs of the bonds. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion?
Sorry, me again. I'm not sure if everybody understands exactly what this is doing. Bond premiums are a part of awarding debt. When you award debt, you go out to bid, you get bond ratings, you do all these fun things, and you award based upon the total interest cost. In other words, the less amount of interest you pay is the one who wins. Makes sense, right? Part of that calculation is the bond premium. What this article is saying is basically, we cannot apply, you could borrow $10 million, get a $1 million premium. You'd still get $10 million in your bank, but you'd only bill the taxpayers $9 million for their debt service. Perfect. This is saying, we're still going to bill you the 10. We're going to keep the 1 somewhere else and use it later on for something else that mimics this type of a project that meets the same debt service requirements. For example, tonight, the Selectmen are going to read, when you get to the school budget article, that you're lowering your capital cost. That's because we went out to bid, we got a premium, and we applied it to the debts of the taxpayers. I'm paying $2.7 million more in Groveland. If this article was used, you'd be paying the $2.7 million, and I'd have a premium of $2 million sitting in a school bank account that I could use whatever I wanted to. No, I don't buy this one at all. I think the way it's been done in the past is the way it should always be done. To let, you get the project you want at the price you said you were going to, and the actual cost to the taxpayer is what it is, without a hidden future project attached to it.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
Thankfully, it's not in the school district, so you don't get to keep it. So this money stays in the town. It doesn't go outside. I know if it was up to you, and the school district is always tight, you'd keep that money. But this money stays with the town to be used in other forms to make better services, provide, uh, better resources. It doesn't, better water, there you go. It doesn't walk out of the town and go away, never to be seen again. Big difference.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, you're overcharging the people for the cost of the original project they voted for, and holding money for something that they may not want. I don't know why every project can't stand on its own.
What were we gonna say?
Um, Kathleen Kestrelles, I, I looked at this article too with a little bit of skepticism, but then I did ask our town attorney and my understanding is this is a, ju- just passing this does not cost, cause the town to keep more debt than it needs. Any reuse of the premium would have to go back to a town meeting, but it also says that anything received could be used to lower the debt. And it seemed like a logical option to have for the town and perhaps town council could explain how other towns use this.
Something you can discuss?
Mr. Moderator, through you, again, um, madam select person, what was the question?
Um, this article I questioned you about is to, whether this was a typical thing that towns accepted so they could have the option to reduce debt and then if they did wanna use any proceeds, would they have to go back to a town meeting to do that?
The answer is yes, you would have to go back to town meeting to do it. This came from the Municipal Modernization Act in 2016 and it, it allowed each bond vote to have an addition, additional wording that would permit any surplus to be applied to lower the debt. That was the intention. I don't think the intention is to bond for too much money and then end up having a surplus, you know, that you, you never needed. I think the intention was, if you end up with a surplus, if the project comes in less than what was anticipated and you have a surplus, it could be used to lower the debt or for other purposes as town meeting might determine. That language can be put on every bond article after 2016 and what this does is, it says that for articles for bonding that occurred prior to them that didn't have the wording, if town meeting wishes and wants to authorize it, you can add that type of wording to prior bond issues as well in the event that there's a surplus. I have seen a lot of towns adopt this. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
All right, other questions, discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor of Article twenty-one, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All right, I mean, I think it's in favor, but I, I, we're gonna have a vote, it's too close, so let's, uh, hand vote. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand, please. I guess my hearing isn't as good as I thought. Um, it, it did pass and it was more than I thought. Yes, it was forty-seven, twenty-one with a bunch of abstentions. Um, let's, uh, carry on. Article twenty-two. Kathy, is this, we have a motion under Article twenty-two?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
When you're ready.
We have a motion to be read under Article twenty-two. Go ahead.
Um, I, Kathleen Kestrelles, um, do move to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the amount of fifty-one thousand and five hundred dollars for the purchase of one new police cruiser or to take any other action relative thereto.
Right, so we have that motion. Um, the board of selectmen recommend favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action, so we have a motion. Do we have a second for the motion as was just read? Okay, do we have any discussion?
So, just a quick explanation, if you notice that the wording, um, said raise appropriate or appropriate by transfer, um, we needed to clarify that we're gonna just use free cash, you can't have it coming from every which way. So, this just makes it straightforward.
All right, so, no, the discussion, we'll take a vote in Article twenty-two, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous in favor. Article twenty-three. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote pursuant to provisions of general laws, chapter forty-four, subsection fifty-three E and a half, to set the annual spending limits for the following eight revolving accounts established in the general bylaws for fiscal year 2021 or take any other action relative thereto. PC Memorial Park is a hundred fifty thousand, Pine's Boat Ramp, twenty-five thousand, zoning board of appeals, fifteen thousand, Bagel Summer Program, two hundred fifty thousand, Council on Aging, fifteen thousand, Fire Department CPR class, six thousand, Pine's Maintenance, fifty thousand, Groveland Day, thirty thousand. Submitted by the finance director, reports on the revolving funds may be found in appendix B. Uh, the board of selectmen recommend favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action. We have a motion?
Move favorable.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action, any discussion?
Yeah, you might wanna change that to fiscal year two thousand twenty-two.
What did I say?
Well, they wrote it as twenty-one, two, it should be twenty-two.
Where? Oh, friendly amendment two thousand twenty-two. Fiscal year.
Go ahead.
I thought that we changed the bylaws in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one to make this as one article. I, I think the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one is referring to the year that the bylaw established in twenty-twenty-one.
Oh, okay, that's all right.
Oh, the, this is spending limits for the upcoming fiscal year though, isn't it? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Spending limit for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one and two thousand twenty-one. But this was established in twenty-twenty-one and we're approving it. But I think that-
Right, right, they, they were. But, I mean, this is, the, I, I just wanna make sure, it, this is to set the spending limit for this upcoming fiscal year so they could expend funds from those revol- those accounts, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, we have some wording that needs to happen. After, uh, it says established fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, we need to say, and applic- applicable to FY twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-two. So, uh, would somebody like to make that motion?
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't catch all of it.
Just, just say, yes, I wanna make the motion to change the words from FY-
Yes, I wanna make the motion, to change those words.
I was gonna say something, but I'm not going to.
Stop.
So, it's, yes, so the motion is to change it to say, and applicable to FY twenty-two. Thank you, Kathy. Uh, do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Thank you. All in favor of the motion, as Kathy just read, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes, unanimous. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate, uh, by transfer from the, uh, PEG access and cable-related fund, the sum of one hundred fifty thousand dollars to be extended under the direction of the board of selectmen to fund cable access services, supplies, and equipment for FY twenty-two, or take any action relative, uh, related thereto. Articles submitted by the finance director, the board of selectmen recommend favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable, second.
We have a motion of second, favorable action, Article twenty-four, any discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor of Article twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Uh, majority in favor, passes. Article twenty-five, uh, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hun- uh, I'm sorry, one million, one hundred sixty-four thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents for the use of the water department, said sum to be offset by FY twenty-twenty-two water department revenue, or take any other action relative thereto. Um, so we're going to be voting on the finance board recommends column, is that correct?
Yeah.
On the right-hand side. And that adds up to the one million, one hundred sixty-four thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. So, you can see all those line items that equal that amount. The article is submitted by the water and sewer commissioners, the board of selectmen recommend favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable action.
Second.
We have a motion of second for favorable action, any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Article twenty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Majority in favor, passes. Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six hundred fifty-three thousand, ninety-five dollars and eighty-six cents for the use of the sewer department, said sum to be offset by FY twenty-twenty-two sewer department revenue, or take any other action relative thereto. Again, we're looking at the finance board recommends figures on the far right-hand column that totals six hundred fifty-three thousand, ninety-five dollars and eighty-six se- six cents. Uh, the board of selectmen recommend favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable action, second.
We have a motion of second, favorable action, any discussion? We'll take a vote. All in favor of Article twenty-six, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Okay. Article twenty-seven, I believe we have a motion under Article twenty-seven.
Yes, I just have a, a friendly amendment to strike the last sentence in that article that's following the words, will be borne by the town, so the motion would be, to see if the town will vote to establish a new stabilization fund pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, chapter forty, section five B, to be titled the Firefighter EMT Salary and Benefits Fund, for the purpose of creating reserve monies to pay the cost of firefighter slash EMT salaries beginning FY twenty-five, when the safer grant monies which establish these two, these two new full-time firefighter EMT positions in the fire department will expire and the costs of these personnel will be borne by the town, period. It would end there.
So, we have that motion, do we have a second? All right, so we have a motion of second under Article twenty-seven, the board of selectmen recommend favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action. Do we have any discussion? You already made the motion.
Oh, I did, that's right.
Yep.
Silly me.
It's okay. Um, no discussion? All in favor of Article twenty-seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimous in favor. Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars to pay the cost of hiring a consultant to add the town's general bylaws to the town code, or take any other action relative thereto. The board of selectmen recommend favor, action, so that's, article submitted by the finance director, the board of selectmen recommend favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable, second.
We have a motion of second for favorable action, do we have any discussion? Go ahead.
I've never heard that term before. What is a town code?
Do we have some answer?
I know we've had bylaws and things, I've never heard of the town code before.
Uh, we have an answer.
It simply means it's the collection of the town's bylaws together in one volume. Um, a lot of towns have them, uh, you've really got it here, you've got general bylaws and you've got zoning bylaws, they could all be put together in a book called a code and you could have them numbered so that it's one unified body of regulations and rules, that's all it means.
All right, any other questions, discussion? We'll take a vote. All in favor of Article twenty-eight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimous in favor. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate- Oh, okay. Okay, that's right, I'm sorry. So, go ahead, Kathy.
Um, so, I wanted to make the motion to table this article, as you can see, there's no sum of monies point, stated in it, so we don't have to vote on this article. So, move table.
Do we have a second? All in favor of tabling Article twenty-nine, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Article twenty-nine is tabled. Thank you. Uh, Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to appropriate by transfer from free cash the sum of sixty thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a replacement council on aging handicapped accessible van and for the cost of all, all right, folks, that's a new one, appertanances, appertenances. Appertenances. Is that right? All right. Who put that in there? Come on. There to, and further to, this job isn't easy to read all these words, anyway, you go throw one of those things in there, come on. Um, and further to authorize the board of selectmen to file for and receive grants available to offset the cost of the van, or take any other action relative thereto. The board of selectmen recommend favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable, second.
We have a motion of second for favorable action, Article thirty, any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Article thirty, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimous in favor. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of forty-nine thousand dollars from the Water Enterprise Department retained earnings for the purchase and equipping and maintaining of a one-ton dump truck, or take any other actions relative thereto. The board of selectmen recommend favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable, second.
We have a motion of second for favorable action, uh, any discussion? We'll take a vote. All in favor of Article thirty-one, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is majority in favor, passes. Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of twenty-one thousand dollars from Sewer Enterprise Department retained earnings for the purchase and equipping and maintaining of a one-ton dump truck, or take any other actions relative thereto. The board of selectmen recommend favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable, second.
We have a motion of second for favorable action, any discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor of Article thirty-two, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimous in favor. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of eleven thousand six hundred dollars from the Water Enterprise Department retained earnings to be used for the updating of the emergency response plan, or take any other actions thereto. Uh, the board of selectmen recommend favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable, second.
Motion and second for favorable action, any discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor of Article thirty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous in favor. Uh, passes. Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate three hundred sixty thousand dollars, more or less, for the purpose of replacing water mains and accompanying infrastructure on Union and Chestnut Streets, including necessary surveying, edging, preparation, and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Determine whether this amount shall be raised by taxation, transferred from available funds, borrowing or otherwise, or take any other action relative thereto. The board of selectmen recommend favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable, second.
We have a motion of second, questions? Yep.
Is taxation supposed to be part of this? I thought they were an enterprise fund. The water and sewer, is taxation supposed to be in there?
Um, I guess I would ask town council if we need to strike it or would this be paid? The intention from water and sewer is to pay this bond through water and sewer.
That's what I figured, but they don't tax.
Correct, they don't.
So, that's why I saw taxation wounded.
So, do we need to, because it says or, do we need to take that out?
You ought to strike it, yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, yes, it should be stricken.
All right, so, um, if you would, Kathy, would you like to make a motion that says everything except strikes out, um, ta- taxation?
Yeah, so, the amount shall be transferred from available funds, borrowing or otherwise, or take any other action relative thereto, striking the words by taxation.
Okay, so, we have that motion, striking that word taxation.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me, one small thing, just the word taxation.
Right, it's just taxation's being struck.
Sorry.
So, we have the motion to strike the word, uh, the motion is just striking the word taxation, so would you have a second for that motion? All right, so, um, let's have discussion if we want now, any other discussion on this?
Oh, yeah. It's not reading well, shall be.
All right, um-
Shall be raised by, R-A-I-S-C-D, yes, raised, good idea. So, I'll read it one more time if that's all right? The, this amount shall be raised by transfer from available funds, borrowing or otherwise, or take any other action relative thereto.
All right, so, since Kathy's making these motions, she can change that motion, she did, do we have a second for the motion? All right.
Second.
All right. Any other grammatical errors?
No.
Any discussion further? Let's take a vote. All in favor of Article 34, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous in favor. All right, we are at the omnibus now, and before, as people have been here before, know what I'll do is I'll go down and read each bolded item, each bolded department, and if you want to hold anything in that area, you're going to say hold. Before we get to that point, we have a motion under Article 35 that Kathy will be making, and she's going to be saying some figures in there too, okay? If you want to hold any of those figures, we can also hold that, okay? So go ahead.
Okay. So, I, Kathleen Castren Ellis, do hereby move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer the following sums. Forty thousand dollars from Electric Light Department to General Fund. Fifty thousand dollars from Overlay Surplus to General Fund. Twenty-three thousand from Conservation Fees to General Fund. And twenty-one thousand from VZ Park Revolving Account to General Fund, to defray the town charges for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, as shown for the departments listed below, or take any other action relative thereto.
Okay, so now we're going to go through, and if you want to hold any... Does anyone want to hold any of those figures that were just stated in the beginning of the motion here? Okay, so we're going to keep going. Under General Government Moderator, Selectman, Finance Department, Town Accountant.
Go back to Selectman, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, you hold on Selectman?
Administrative Assistant Salary. Hold on that.
Town Accountant, Board of Assessors, Town Council, Technology, Town Clerk, Economic Development Planning and Conservation, Municipal Buildings, Insurance, under Public Safety, Police Department, Parking Clerk, Fire Department, Building Department, Emergency Management, Education.
Hall.
Public Works, Tree Warden, Highways, Rubbish Collection.
Hall.
Cemetery, under Human Services, Board of Health.
Hall.
Council on Aging.
Hall.
Veterans, Library, Debt Service.
Hall.
Unclassified. Okay, so now we're going to go back to the beginning.
If I could, Mr. Moderator, I missed a hold on the Director of Economic Development Planning and Conservation Department.
Economic Development Planning and Conservation, okay.
Yes, please.
All right, so we'll go back to the beginning. First hold was under Selectman, I believe, under Administrative Assistant Salary.
Mr. Moderator. The Selectman had increased the administrative assistance hours from nineteen, nineteen and a half to, I think it was twenty-four. Selectman voted to approve continuing next year...
Yes.
Continuing next year, I thought, I just thought I had the floor.
Yeah, go ahead. I just asked a question.
The Selectman voted to increase the administrative assistance salary to keep the hours at the twenty-four or twenty-five, whatever it is. This individual goes above and beyond the call of duty, spends more than nineteen hours. Right now, is probably spending more than twenty-four hours, and at least, the Finance Board is recommending to keep it at nineteen hours. That's really not working. It needs to be, it needs to go back up to the twenty-five hours. This individual does a lot of clerical work, works directly with the Board of Selectmen, prepares the warrants, prepares the town meeting, I'm sorry, the Selectman's agenda, and I would like to see it kept at, where the Selectman had recommended it, at twenty-four thousand, seven hundred for the year.
You did not recommend it.
Okay, well, all right, so, folks, just to clarify, as we get, as we're voting here, we're voting the Finance Board recommends figure. So if somebody wants to, you can offer up an amendment to change a figure to another, and then what we do is we vote that by itself. If it passes, it becomes part of what we're voting as the motion. If it doesn't pass, the figure would stay the same. So if somebody would...
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to request that we raise the administrative assistance salary from, to twenty-four thousand, seven hundred from the eighteen, seven seventy-two that's recommended by, by the Finance Board.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend this figure. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All right, do we have discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I just want to clarify, Selectman Watson incorrectly stated that the Board of Selectmen was not supporting the Finance Board's recommendation. The Board of Selectmen voted in support of the eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. If you look all the way to the, to the left side of the column, you'll see this is a brand-new position, so we're adding a significant sum of money to the budget. We are adding additional support to our town hall. I mean, at some point, we have to pause and say, okay, we've added as much money as we can, and the Board of Selectmen voted to support our Finance Board's recommendation for eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. That does bring this new position in for a full year at nineteen hours a week, and lets it get up and running, and supporting our town services. I feel that all of our town employees give a hundred and fifty percent, and I feel that these recommendations do support the hard work that our employees give.
All right, so we, any other discussion?
We want to, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
The nineteen hours a week that this individual's working is not enough. We need the twenty-four hours to get the job done, and I'll stand by the motion of twenty-four seven.
All right, so we have a motion to amend this figure from eighteen, seven seventy-two to twenty-four, seven hundred, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred. Any other discussion on that? All right, yeah, please, if you know you're going to speak, just step right up to the mic.
You know, when we talk about money in positions, we try to separate the person from the actual position, but I can't do that in this situation, because after working ten months with an amazing committee, and with the young lady that actually supported us through the chair, and I also worked a little bit with Mr. Watson, I'm not sure exactly how to do it, and what mechanism needs to be done, but I have to agree with Mr. Watson that you have to find a way to pay the higher salary for a position that is very valuable to our town, and certainly, I saw firsthand how valuable that position and that person, and her dedication to our work, so, thank you.
We don't agree often.
Okay, folks, let's keep going.
Mike Wood, Eight School Street. The Board of Selectmen voted, I think in March, to increase the hours for the Administrative Coordinator and the interim Finance Director until the end of May. So currently, those hours are not nineteen hours, they're twenty-five hours. That is voted until the end of May, and then reevaluated come June 1st.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
If it's reevaluated later, we need, we need funds for it, otherwise, it's not going to happen. So, we've heard a discussion about the town administrator, and there's a need for it, and there's a lot of work, and demanding work at that, and, you know, significant regulatory environment. The additional work is there, and I support the person, and the increased hours and pay.
Well, I will add to the amount in the budget if you keep going, you know, the amount of dollars.
Okay, any other discussion? So we're just voting right now on amending the amount from eighteen, seven seventy-two to twenty-four thousand, seven hundred. All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I would say that it passes, so the figure that we're going to be voting as part of this is twenty-four thousand, seven hundred. The next hold was under Town Accountant. Who would like to speak to that? Okay.
I asked for the hold on this only because...
Just please, sir, just state your name and address.
I'm sorry. Jim Scanlon, Forty-two Center Street. It seems to be a huge leap from the previous year's salary to what was being recommended by the Board of Selectmen. I value all employees for the town, and I know in that increase, there were extra hours, and I'm not counting, and that should be accounted for, but this is a huge increase recommendation by the Board of Selectmen. How do we, how do we justify the... I'd be willing to give it to her as long as we give everyone else a fair shot of getting a huge increase. And I think it sends the wrong message to some employees in town, whether they're police, or fire department, or administrative. It seems to me, I don't like, maybe I just don't know all the facts, and I'd be willing to hear a counterpoint, but this, most town employees were getting two percent, and this is, this is a big jump, so I'd have to understand what, what the reason is.
Okay, so can we get that question answered? The increase over last year?
I can answer it. My name's Ellen Petrelli, I am the Town Accountant, I live at Nine Briscoe Road here in Groveland. The increase is due to, when we were doing our budgets, I asked, am I supposed to put my budget in as if the TA position passes, or keep my position the same? So, we were entering budgets as if it passed, so with that, the Finance Director position leaves, so all the finance responsibility comes down to me. So, part of it is increased hours for increased responsibility, and it's also a slight increase in wage to give me the average wage for just an accountant, not even those additional responsibilities. So I tried to keep it simple. I did my average wage calculation based on a 2018 number, and just gave a two percent increase. I checked those numbers recently, they're actually much higher. Georgetown's voting ninety-five thousand for theirs. So I felt it was a reasonable number. I tried to be very reasonable about it. I looked at six different towns. The wages ranged widely, so I took an average, and that is where I arose to the eighty-eight.
All right, go ahead.
Jim Snow, Eleven Brook Street. I have a question through you, Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee. Doesn't, if somebody amends the budget, doesn't the money have to be found somewhere else in the budget to amend that line item?
And that's what I was just asking on either side here, and I, could somebody answer that question?
To have a balanced budget.
Right.
That's what we had to do.
Yes.
The maker of the motion had to do that.
Yes, I think if you, if you stray from the Finance Board recommendation, as Selectman Watson did, it would be responsible to suggest where the money, the extra five thousand dollars, will come from. Unfortunately, that doesn't always happen. Sometimes people just move the money, and they let us all try and figure it out later.
So isn't his motion moot if he doesn't find the money? In order to have a balanced budget? I'm not opposed to it, but I thought that was always the action that had to be taken at a town meeting.
I guess it's a simple, simple sense. It's considered a balanced budget, but there's, you know, there's a little leeway, but which, what is, what the Finance Board tries to do, what we try to do, is to just be fair, and to look at the whole picture, and not look in just on one employee or just one other employee. We look at them all.
Okay.
And so that's why the recommendation was not, it was a brand-new position. The recommendation was to bring it in at nineteen hours, and then see how that goes.
So just, I guess, just in answering the question, they, there's no requirement that if you change the amount higher, that you find the money?
I thought that was what was done in the past.
Well, if the town meeting votes, it, then it's up to the powers that be to make it work, okay? Now, it makes sense, what you're saying, especially if it's, I mean, I don't want to belittle five or six thousand dollars, it's all real money.
Right.
But if it, I imagine they could probably, that becomes manageable, but I understand what you're saying, and it makes it difficult if we keep adding money, yes.
I know in the past we have, that people have been forced to do that at town meetings.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, go ahead.
So, I just want to comment that, as a town volunteer, this is one of the most difficult challenges that we have. I don't volunteer my time to make enemies with employees. I don't volunteer my time to be difficult, to not be generous, but I do, as I volunteer my time, I try to be fair, I try to look at the long-term plan of the town, I try to look at the budget, I try to look at all of our town employees. I feel, I spend a lot of time, the board spent a lot of time, we had a lot of discussion.
All right, so we're going to have to go back to that before we close.
I feel that we should continue to look at comparable wages to other towns, but I also need to make it clear, a lot of our other towns have a lot more revenue sources, and a lot different budgets, a lot different stabilization funds, a lot more extra funds than Groveland has. So it's a fine line to keep finances in a responsible, stable way, and reward our employees as much as we want to. We feel that we made a good compromise. We've paid the accountant this year for extra time when we had, when our Finance Director left. We did agree to increase the hours for next year, but I did not feel comfortable changing the wage for one employee without looking at this as part of a long-term strategic plan for all of our employees. A lot of other employees are deserved of the same, and I'm hopeful that when we have a town administrator, they're going to have the time to take this project on, and to do it in a fair, thoughtful, strategic way for all of our employees. And I'm not trying to, again, it, it's a difficult part of a volunteer position, this part right here.
Thank you. So where we are is, there was a question about why it went up. Did somebody, you certainly can offer up an amendment to change the amount if you so choose, and if it's seconded, we'll vote it. Is that something you'd like to do, or somebody else would like to do?
I would like to find it. Would you like to do it?
Okay, so you don't want to change it, okay.
I would like to vote to change it.
Okay, so we need, we need a motion for an amendment with an amount.
I would like to amend the accountant's salary amount from eighty-three, three eighty-two to eighty-eight, nine fifty, as the Board of Selectmen recommended.
All right, do we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
All right, I think we've had our discussion. Any further discussion? Are we good?
Yes, I'll just make one point, because the gentleman raised a valid point about unbalancing the budget, you know? When, when we start to have employees raising their own salaries in motions on the floor based on a salary survey that they did, and you start to ignore the recommendation of the, of the Financial Board, and ignore the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, well, actually, we voted for it, but ignore the recommendation of the Board, of the Finance Board, which was for additional hours and a two percent raise, I just feel that we're starting to get into an area where a lot of money could be spent that we may not be able to find, okay? So just understand that as we keep moving forward, that the column that balances this budget is the middle column.
Can I just ask a question? If we get to the point, at what point in the process, if it got to a point where the budget was unbalanced, we would potentially have to come back to a town meeting, is that what would have to happen?
Yes, we would, we would have to come back to a town meeting in the fall and make cuts to budgets, to find the money, yes.
Okay, so, any other discussion?
Bill.
Yes.
I do have a quick comment. The one thing I did want to point out is, during our meeting, Sarah on the Finance Board stated that accountants could be hired in the private sector at that wage without any issue, and in an attempt to keep valuable employees, I think it's very important that we step up and start making those changes, and start paying people what they deserve to be paid, because ultimately, if she leaves, and we do have to hire somebody, we're not going to get somebody at that wage. We're going to end up paying it plus just the additional money internal, which is extremely costly in itself. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
To your left.
What's that? I'm sorry.
I just, I, I just, I don't feel that that's a fair statement. I don't feel that without doing a large-scale thorough wage-salary study, that you can say that. Municipal wages are different than private sector wages. CPA wages are different than municipal wages. And, I just, I, I feel like some information is being said that's not necessarily vetted. And what I'm trying to say is, I want to vet that information. I want a study. I want a sca, a study that's done by a different person who is neutral and can cast a wide net of comparable wages. I don't think it's appropriate for employees to be doing their own wage studies. I don't know. I, maybe it's accurate and we'll do an adjustment going forward. But, if it's not, I don't, I don't know exactly what's entailed in these other roles that we're looking at. I don't know that for sure. And so therefore, I can't make a recommendation. And I think it's also a precedent.
Was there other discussion?
Just quickly, I'm an accountant, a CPA, and it's tough to find good accountants. It's tedious, detailed work. It's a dying, I think it's dying. People don't want to get into it. You can make more money doing something else. A lot less aggravation, a lot less responsibility. It's a lot easier work out there. It seems reasonable to me in scope. Certainly from my experience on the Board of Selectmen several years ago, there's a lot more work that needs to be done in the accounting department. Some of the accounts are reconciled somewhere, you know? I don't, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but you know what? To do it and do it right, you need competent people and you got to pay them. So, I'm in favor of...
All right. And different, or?
Ellen Petrello, 9 Briscoe Road, Town Accountant. I don't know if you can hear me. I just wanted to speak to the wage analysis because that was brought up and it was voted against having a professional wage analysis done. So, I really had no choice but to do my own. And I can tell you the towns that I went to. I went to Georgetown, Raleigh, West Newbury, Topsfield, Wenham. I did get the Merrimack number. It all came out to the average that I put on there. Like I said, Georgetown was the most current one I looked at. These were all from 2008. Georgetown is about to vote 95,000. Wenham is no longer really in there because they made their Town Accountant their Finance Director. So, that removes the two lowest-paid people and just brings the average up even higher. And I'm not even asking for that. I can tell you, in response to Dan McDonald's comments about the state when he was in there before, I have cleaned all of that up. We no longer have any material or immaterial weaknesses in my department. So, I've done all that in the four years. I still have a lot of projects I would like to do. I really take a lot of pride in my position. I do live here, so I care a lot about the money and how it is spent. I have a lot of ideas on how to help the tax rate at least stabilize, especially during the school building. And I'd like to do all of that. And I think that I deserve a fair wage to continue to do that.
All right. If it's something new, everything we've heard a lot on either side, do you have something else to offer that's, hasn't been heard?
Just, just quickly. The Town Accountant is one of the, one of the most important positions in the town of Groveland and, and in any town. We're paying, we're not even paying market rate here. And I don't think it's unreasonable for the request at 88,950. Does a great job, picked up a lot of things. And, you, you, in order to keep these important people, we have, we have to pay them a decent salary. And I'll, I'll support the 88,950. I'm going to make a motion.
Well, we have that. We have a motion already to amend the figure from 83,382 to 88,950. So, all in favor of amending that figure, as I stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
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 I think it passes. So, we're going to, and when we vote the figures at the end, we're going to change that one to 88,950. Okay, the next hold was under Economic Development, Planning and Conservation. What did we want to talk about on that?
Oh, that's me. Yep. So, it's just a, a minor error in the calculation of the salary for the Director of Economic Development, Plan and Conservation. Instead of 55,0021, it should be 55,221. And that is a 2% raise. It's just an error in the...
Okay, so we need a, a motion to amend that figure from 55,021 to 55,221.
Yes.
You make, do we have a second on that amended figure? Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor of the amended figure of 55,221, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay. The next hold was, just bear with me, under Education?
Yeah, that's me. Okay, so, I, Kathleen Castren Ellis, will amend the recommended Kentucky Capital Assessment to $2,245,566. This is a reduction, which is a good thing. It changes the total education budget to $13,006,185. And it reflects the new Kentucky Capital Assessment letter dated 5/19/2021.
So, we have a motion to amend the figure to $2,245,566. Do we have a second on that?
Did we vote on this one yet? The Director?
What's that?
The Director of Economic Planning. Did we vote on that?
Yeah, we did.
Yes.
Okay.
Don't throw me any curveballs at this late hour.
Sorry.
Although, this technically isn't late. Used to go to midnight, 12:30. So, let's, let's keep moving. So, we have a motion to amend that figure to 2,245,566. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of the, of amending that amount, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. So, that one, again, we'll change that figure. The next hold was under Rubbish Collection.
Yes. So, I, Kathleen Castren Ellis, move the rubbish collection contract expense to $575,000. This changes the total rubbish collection to $586,916. And the total public works to $1,558,583.
So, we have a motion to amend the figure...
Second.
Oh, yeah, so we have a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor of the amended figure? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, so we'll change that. Okay, the next was under Board of Health, I believe.
What a hell?
Who asked about that?
I did. Dick Hodges, my wife lets me in. I'm still at 35 Union Street. I have a question about, we get zoning board reports, we get planning board reports, we get all kinds of conservation reports. Those are all very important. I'm curious why we never hear from the Health Department. And let me give you an example. Are we doing better with cancer or are we doing worse? Why are we still putting fluoride in the water? It's the original component of rat poison. Things like that never seem to come up at a, at a town meeting. And I'm just curious why we never get a report from the Health Department. I'm also wondering when the town hall's going to open so I can go and talk with them.
Do we have an answer to either of the questions?
Yes, we have a question, answer to. The town hall opens on June 1st.
I'll take the other one.
What?
Yeah.
Sorry, did I misspeak?
By.
Oh, by appointment. Per the Board of Health.
The Board of Health is an elected body, you realize that? So, they're responsible to you when they're elected. And if you're not happy with the, what you're getting from them, I suggest you run or change your vote the next time.
No, I'm unhappy with the format. In other words, I'm wondering why they're not in here to give a report this evening. I'm very happy with them. I've talked with them. They're very dedicated. They're fabulous people to work with. I just want to know why they're not in here to give a report. That's what my question is.
You'd have to ask them. They don't, they don't...
Well, I'm asking the Selectmen. You put your stamp on this. Why aren't they here?
They don't respond, they don't answer to us because they're an elected body.
Okay.
Okay, so there's no ho, hold on any of the figures, just a question. Okay.
The finances are fine. Moving on.
Okay. Council on Aging. What was the hold on that?
Hi, Laurel Paholsky, 125 School Street. I'm a member of the Council on Aging Board. And as many of you know, our former director, Lynn Santin, has retired. And we have been doing interviewing. We think we have a final candidate. And she actually is the least expensive at $62,000. When you look again at other towns and other areas, what they're getting, we'd be fortunate to get someone for $62,000 for the full-time position that it is. We would like to offer her a job, but if this is all we can offer her, we're back at square one. And we don't have a Director of the Council on Aging.
So, if you, would you like to offer an amendment to change that figure from 59,726 to $62,000?
Yes.
You'd like to make that amendment? So...
I would like to make a motion to...
Yes, to amend that figure.
How do you say it? I would like to make a motion to make the amendment for the Director's salary on the Council on Aging to $62,000.
Okay. Do we have a second on that? Any further discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of amending the figure from 59,726 to $62,000, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, so that figure will change to $62,000. Under Debt Service, we had a hold.
Yes. I, Kathleen Castren Ellis, amend the debt service principal to $285,800. This changes the total debt budget to $389,263. I need a second.
Yes, so we had that, I heard a second. Okay, I'm sorry. Do we have any discussion on that? All right. So, all in favor of changing, of making that change to, it's, it's the 285,800, right?
285.
Yes. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right. So, I believe that was the last hold. Am I correct?
I'm just, I got to check and see if I have a total. Just a minute.
So, now, we voted some amendments under the original motion that was made. Now, we need to vote a mo, the original motion, which we had a, a motion of second for. So, all in favor of Article 35 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It passes. Now, before we jump to the last article...
No, I oppose.
Okay, I'm sorry. It, it's majority in favor. Passes. Before we go to Article 36, we, I've been told we need to jump back to Article 34...
Yes.
...to make a change. So, can somebody tell me what we need to do? Do we have to have a motion reconsider, Bill? Does that need to be somebody from the prevailing side or how does that work?
I voted for it.
Okay, so go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Article 34.
All right, so we have a motion to reconsider Article 34. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
All in favor of reconsidering Article 34, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, so we, it's a majority to reconsider Article 34. What do we, what do we have?
Okay, I, Kathleen Castren Ellis, move to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $360,000, more or less for the purpose of replacing water mains and accompanying infrastructure on Union and Chestnut Streets, including, what's that word?
Necessary.
Including necessary...
Necessary, surveying engineering preparation and all of the costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $360,000 under General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, 3, and other sections. And that the Selectmen are authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. And further, that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or rates, or rates approved by this vote, less...
Notes, I'm sorry.
No, sorry. Upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to pay project costs. And the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied or take any other action relative thereto. Oh, my God.
Okay, so that's a, a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Discussion?
So, I was advised that we needed to put this language in so that you could bond. Is that okay with you?
That's fine with me. That's what I had asked for originally.
Okay.
And the original one was written by Bond Council. So, as long as I can get the money and do the project, whatever the wording has to be, is fine.
All right.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion of second under Article 34. Any further discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion that was just read under Article 34, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Okay, thank you. So, let's go to...
The last article.
Article 36.
Yeah.
To see if the town will vote to fix the salary compensation of all elective and appointive, appointive officers in the town for the 12 months ending June 30th, 2022. Fixing of salaries according to Articles 25 through 26 and 35 above or take any other action relative thereto. Articles submitted by Finance Board. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action.
Move favorable.
We have a motion of second, favorable action, any discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor of Article 36, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Majority passes. We just need one more motion to dissolve annual town meeting.
Motion to dissolve annual town meeting.
Second.
All in favor of dissolving annual town meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Majority passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.